I'm joined by Mayor Protem Bazagian, Council members Albrecht, Shapiro, and Weintraub, as well as city staff. If you would like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. Members of the public who need hearing assistance can request a device from the city clerk as well. We'll now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance signifies the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second?
Moved by Councilmember Albrecht, seconded by Councilmember Weintraub. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Report on closed session. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Yes, we did meet in closed session to discuss item number one, anticipated litigation. Item number three, public employee performance evaluation. No reportable action was taken with respect to either. We will need to recess back into closed session to discuss item number two for potential litigation against the city. Item number four, we did not discuss, and there's currently not a need at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. There are no presentations tonight, so we'll head straight into council announcements. I'll begin tonight with Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of announcements. And first, I'm sure all of us will be doing the same thing. I want to compliment Community Services for a unbelievable pumpkin festival. I'm not going to go into too much detail because I'm going to leave some for everybody else. But starting from the top down, the layout, the preparation, the parking arrangements, everything about it, hats off, it's a blue ribbon all the way. For Clean Power Alliance, you know, I always bring that up. I like to do it. We're beginning an experiment, as I mentioned in the past, with called Direct Access Ownership. They're going to be purchasing transmission assets publicly financed such as EV chargers, batteries, microgrids, rooftop solar. It's going to be amazing. It's changed really from the little engine that could to the almighty power source before our eyes. And I think within the next year or two, it's going to be a mega power when it comes to seeing your energy bills. Also attended with Councilman Shapiro, Valley Economic Alliance Recognition Night. We were there. The Valley Economic Alliance recognized two very, very genuine people. One is Jeffrey Prang. He's our county assessor. He's been there about 14 years, just a fantastic guy. You may not feel that way when you look at your property tax bills, but you know, he's a hardworking, sincere person. And Bob Blumenfeld, Field L.A. Council District, L.A. City Council, and also the district here in Woodland Hills and Assemblymen. So great people deserve to be honored. And then just a small, quick report on the AI Flame Detection Cameras Ad Hoc Committee. This is new to the council. We're working very, very hard. These ignitions can be identified within six inches from quite a distance. We'll have much more to report in about a week and a half to two weeks. We're working on a variety of things that are coming to pass very, very quickly. We've got the pedal to the metal on this, so can't wait to tell you the future. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you. I will join with all my colleagues and thank the city staff and everyone who worked so hard. I know the Beer Garden was flowing as well with the Chamber, and Rotary was selling pumpkin pies, but our staff, Erica and Jeff and everyone, did an amazing job. And Kindon as well. Kindon was welcoming each and every guest who came in. And it was great. And I loved the switch. I still like the cars if we could do that again in the future, too. But the switch to have the puppies get the awards this year was pretty amazing. So a lot of fun. Seemed like everybody was having a great time, and the flow of the event went extremely well. So thank you for that. I had the pleasure to attend the Rotary meeting virtually and hear from the guest speaker, Councilmember Albrecht, who represented the city very well and spoke about all things related to the city, including one of the items we're discussing here tonight. And that is it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Weintraub?
I will just echo, further echo my compliments on the pumpkin festival. It was really a tremendous event, and I know how much time and effort goes into it from staff, and I really believe the community truly appreciated it. And it was a perfect 10 for an event, so thank you.
And Mayor Protem?
Yes, I wanted to make a couple announcements. One already has been stated, and that's the thanks staff for the pumpkin festival. The Community Services Department did a great job. Of course, I kind of want to go back 30 years, and I don't know if Erica knows this, but we had the pumpkin festival last up for 10 days. No kidding. So that's your goal for next year, is to have a 10-day festival. I wanted to also remind everybody that our next meeting is not until November, so I want to remind everybody that we do have an election coming up, a special election, November 4th. And you can mail in your ballot before then if you wish. There's only one item on the ballot, and that's Proposition 50, which you can read up on, on your own. But please go out and vote, because so far the turnout's been rather low. And then finally, I want to wish everyone a happy Halloween, my own personal favorite holiday.
Thank you very much. I have a few things to report then as well. First of all, our Gates Canyon Park is considering fencing, and we'll be having a workshop on that at 9:00 a.m. on November the 1st. It'll be held at Gates Canyon Park. You're welcome to join. More information is available on our city website for this and the next three announcements I'll make as well. Coming up on November 10th, which will be just two days before our next city council meeting, we are having a Veterans Day celebration. We'll be honoring five veterans who are either from Calabasas or are affiliated with Calabasas in one way or another. So please come join us for that. That'll be right here in the Civic Center Plaza at the Veterans Memorial Garden in the back. And then the next two events, there'll be one on November 22nd in person at Founder's Hall, and another one virtual on the 19th to discuss Tennyson Swim Center fees. So this is something that we've talked about a bit here, and we want to get as much community input as we can. So if you, if you want to know more about that, again, November 22nd at 9:00 a.m. here in Founder's Hall, and November 19th virtually at 6:00 p.m. All that information is available on our website. I too want to give a big shout out to all of the staff and everyone who put on our Calabasas Pumpkin Festival. It was fantastic. And the, the highlight, I think, was the Instagram leading up to it promoting the pumpkin contest. And a big shout out to Cleopatra, my favorite. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda here. Oh, the state of the city? When is the state of the city?
Mayor, that is on November 18th, and that is also on our website, and we are sending out invitations, but it is open to the public, so we hope people come and support that wonderful event.
And what time is that at?
Scott, help me out on that one. Do you remember? I want to say 6:30, 7?
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. Okay, great. And that will begin at 6:00 p.m., but you'll have another announcement about that at our next city council meeting, and more details will follow, so keep an eye out for that. If you don't get it in your email or other notices, you can always check our city website. That'll be updated shortly, once the, the full agenda is available. Okay, with that, we're now moved to public comments. Now's the time for the general public comments for items not on the agenda. Each speaker will be asked to state their name and city that they live in, and they'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council on items within the subject-mattered jurisdiction of the council. The council is unable to respond due to state law, which prohibits the council from addressing items not on the agenda. However, our full city staff is here, and your council is listening. I have one speaker card so far. If anybody else would like to speak on non-agendized items, now's the time to get a speaker card in. If you're speaking on an agendized item, you can also turn in a speaker card and put the item number in the top right-hand corner. But we'll begin tonight with the first speaker, which is Mark Levinson.
Good evening, Mark Levinson, Chair of the Chamber of Commerce. And I would like to echo also praise for Pumpkin Fest, for all those who put it on, and the tireless hours they spent leading up to the event, not just the event, but everyone I talked to had a great time, had an opportunity to wander up and back through the different booths. Everyone there seemed to be having a good time as well. Chamber certainly enjoyed it, and Beer Garden was very, very busy all day long, as were our other booths. In addition, I've got two things just to quickly announce. This Saturday, Limitless Karate is having a ribbon cutting. They're five years old. Unfortunately, they began during COVID, so they didn't have a chance to have a grand opening. And then, following week is Equity Union is having a mixer also at night, and they're going to provide food from in and out. And probably the most important thing I get to announce tonight is introduce one of our new, one of our very active Chamber members, Alex. Could you join me? Alex Zimmerman has a business here in Calabasas, very active, very community-minded.
Yeah, thank you so much. Really excited to be here. I am an exercise scientist by trade. I did my master's studies at Columbia University in New York, where I spent almost 20 years of my adult life. And I studied the effects of exercise on cognitive function in aging population. And so I've, after working 20 years for a variety of industry-leading health and fitness brands, I brought to Calabasas, I think, the first of its kind. I'm building predictive models for healthy aging. And so across a variety of health-span pillars such as strength, cognition, et cetera, we're leveraging AI to build predictive models and interventions to help people live an active, healthy life. And I'm very excited to continue to get to know everybody. We live in Long Island City. I know Forest Hills, so, you know, not too far. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. There are no more speaker cards, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Yes, number nine, please.
Yeah, say number nine.
Number nine? Okay. We'll go ahead and dive right in then, starting with Councilmember Shapiro, item number nine.
I'll first start with a quick couple of questions for Ron, since he's here. It's important I ask you questions, right?
Yes, sir.
And I gave you a heads up, so hopefully you got that. Looking at Exhibit A, a budget amendment to the general fund under subsection C on that, although it's not up on the screen yet, but for the public, the questions, if you could explain under, what is, I'll ask the general question first, what is the difference in a cost situation? What is the difference of expenditures for the city to have this as a fiscal emergency election in June versus a November general election? I believe last time you were here, we talked about 70 or so thousand-dollar difference. Is that still correct?
Yes, that difference is still correct, and it's the difference between consolidating with the June primary, which the city does not historically do, versus the November general election, which we always have a council election, except for this last November 24. We didn't have any members.
And then, I'm just looking at this, and I asked earlier for explanation, because under general fund, the first line shows legal fiscal emergency current budget $600,000. Now, my question, reading that as a layman, is does that relate to the fact that if we declare fiscal emergency, it's going to cost us legally $600,000 to do that, or is that something else?
Yeah, so my apologies to Councilmember Shapiro and all the council. I was trying to equate this to, to the report, but I caused confusion. So I'll go through all four numbers here.
Thank you.
So that, that first line that shows current budget is $600,000, what that actually is, is our, our budget estimate in the legal department for contractual services. So that's mainly for our external legal counsel, is the $600,000. The add of $7,000 is just the legal work to put together that fiscal emergency.
Seven thousand?
It's just the $7,000. Again, that's a budget estimate. It can come in under that, it can come in over that, but that's our, that's our estimate. The next line is our contractual services in the city manager department. So that $140,000 that you see there as the original budget, again, that's the original budget for all the contractual services for the, for the city manager. The add of $55,000 is for surveys, and that's for doing potentially two surveys for, for the sales tax measure, the potential sales tax measure. The third line is also contractual services for the city manager budget, and that is $75,000 increase for just the outreach and the education as we talk with all the citizens, with the HOAs, with the Chamber, with a variety of different groups within the city. So it's a lot of publication, a lot of print material, and advertisement, mailers, and so forth. The last item is the election. That's in the city clerk's office. We do not have any, any elections scheduled in this fiscal year, '25, '26. The hundred-dollar budget is just to take care of any incidental that would, that would pop up this year, and it's only $100, right? But the $112,000 is specifically there for the June 26 California primary. So that's the estimate to consolidate the sales tax measure, put one measure on the ballot for sales tax in the June primary. If council so decides not to put the measure on for June, but to push, put it on to November, then this 112 gets decreased significantly.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification. Did, did you want us to just ask questions at this point, or you want?
No, let's, let's have a conversation.
Okay.
I think it's an item we have a lot of people want to make input on.
Okay.
Before you make those comments, just to clarify for the public, Ron, what you've said in a nutshell is the left-hand column is our current annual budget, the middle column are the expenses related to this sales tax initiative?
Correct.
And the right-hand column is the sum of the two?
That is correct.
Thank you. David, go ahead.
I'll follow up one more on that, just for clarification. The middle column is for the sales tax initiative if we go forward with the June date. If it's a November general election, it'll be $175,000 versus $249,000, something like that.
Correct.
Okay.
And it would span two different fiscal years.
Right. Correct. Thank you. My comments, and I touched on them last time, I'm being, I think, consistent, is we are all in agreement, we did that last meeting, that this is something that is needed for the city and for the future of the city, and is very, very important. My two concerns are, number one, the timing. The timing of an item on a ballot, what that means, when is the best opportunity for the city to have arguably a better chance to have this item pass? I'm not an expert. I know we all will opine. We don't have that information before us here, but my concern is that we have enough time to educate, to inform the public, and to answer questions. Frankly, I've had a number of people come up to me in a very short time since the last meeting, and who are intelligent, who don't necessarily follow the meetings and watch them with the other thousands that do, but they absolutely are aware of what's going on, and they ask specifically why. I give them, I start to give them a quick few points of why, and their immediate reaction was not necessarily positive. And those are people who are intelligent, who are in the city, who knew enough to even ask or comment. And my concern, big concern, is that with the holidays and a very short time window here, that even if we were to go forward in a short term, that it would not be sufficient time to do what we need to do, to hear from people, to answer questions, to inform and educate them as to what we are doing, what the purpose of this is, and the necessity of it is as well. That's number one. So that would lead me, as I mentioned last time, towards the November election versus the June election. And part of that was also there'd be a much larger vote, voter population in November than there would be in June historically, based on elections, even the one we have coming up in June for Prop 50, or the special election in Prop 50. Second is the word emergency declaration and the fact of doing that. That's something I, I expressed concern with last time. I still have some concern about that. I'm wanting to listen to my colleagues and hear from the city manager and CFO and anyone else who's going to speak on this tonight, but I do have a concern about that, and that would tie into the June date also. It's the $70,000 difference is not a reason for me, even though I asked those questions, to say no. The biggest concern is having sufficient time to have this information to reach all the public that's going to vote and have them understand fully the purpose of it, and not just see something and react to it in potentially the wrong way. So I don't know the answer, but that's, those are my initial thoughts, pretty strongly.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, and I have a couple of comments based on what David said. Question, our policy, and I believe it was a resolution we passed, I'm not, I don't think it was an ordinance, that we, whenever there's a municipal issue, we create our own special ballot because the county can't be competent enough to print its own ballot material and mail it out. Are we, did you factor that in here, and are we doing that? Because that is, that was a resolution passed long ago. So I think we'd have to add that, too. That's going to be a $20,000 to $30,000 cost, I believe.
Yeah, we'll research that. This is the first I've heard that that resolution was in place, so.
Anybody remember that resolution? Okay, so can we research that? Actually, I think it's more like $10,000 to $20,000. I don't think it's 20 to 30. But please research that, and unless, it's still a resolution, so I'm assuming it applies here. Secondly, and I spoke to Kindon about this, he actually brought it up, and I'm glad he did. The survey, is someone from staff overseeing the survey before it goes out? Because in the past, we've had surveys that don't include the 91301 zip code, or they disproportionately weigh certain segments of the population, and then we wind up with an inaccurate survey. So is someone looking at that?
We are, Mayor Protem. In fact, we've already had two meetings with the survey company that is doing this. And I've expressed those concerns about, and shared a map with them about geographically how our population is distributed, and then also just the concern for the 91301. But also making sure that certain areas that are in the 91301 aren't included because they're not in city limits.
And also with the 91302, there's a lot of areas, hidden hills, unincorporated Calabasas, they need to be excluded. So someone has to just oversee that. I don't, we don't need to here. The other thing involves a date, and I, of course, would like to save costs, but I have some concerns with the November election date. First of all, if it passes in June, I believe we would get the revenue earlier.
Correct.
And more revenue that would easily make up for this cost. The other concern, though, that is more significant, is the fact that if the county puts a tax on the ballot, which is very possible, then we would wind up having to have our ballot measure receive a larger percentage of the vote within Calabasas in order for ours to pass. Otherwise, the county would get the money, and we would, and they would cap off the amount that could ever be taxed, so we would never be able to pass a tax again unless something sunsetted or was repealed. The other problem I have with November is that, I mentioned last time, there are three ballot initiatives that have been filed for circulation. Now, I can't guarantee they're going to be on the ballot, but they have been filed, and they're on the Secretary of State's website, that would change the requirement to be two-thirds for cities. And if that passes in November, and it gets a larger percentage of the vote than our tax would, then we will forever never be able to pass another tax here, because it's unrealistic to expect two-thirds of the public to agree on that. So that persuades me in the direction of June, and that's, those are the reasons why I favor June. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. Such a big issue. I hope a lot of people are watching tonight, because this issue really is something that's going to define the city for years to come, for better or worse. Better meaning we're going to retain what we have and watch it grow and thrive, and for worse, it's not going to be pretty. I won't go into the details, but it's got a lot to do with staff and expenses that are going to continue to escalate. So this has kept me up at night. I love this city, we all do here. I've been on the fence on both sides of this. Should we have it in June? I'm worried about the county coming in. The extradition revenue will pay for it. But do we have enough time to really educate everybody and get over the shock value that they're going to see in the paper that our city has declared a fiscal emergency? I just don't know, and this is what I've been wrestling with. Having worked with the general public my whole life, and have had conversations with people in business, yeah, I can persuade them to see a point of view that I believe is accurate. And I had just that conversation on Friday with someone who was definitely against it. And we talked for over an hour, someone who knows the city well, works hard with the city, has contributed in many ways. And after the hour was done, that person agreed with me, and I said, in fact, what I'd like you to do is become an advocate for it, not just agree. But it took a long time to get her to understand. It was a her, and I was happy, and she was happy and satisfied with the answer. And from that, I really thought about it over the weekend, how important this is, the stain of having a fiscal emergency, and I can just see the headlines on it, and not having any expert guidance. You know, we've had surveys, but there hasn't been someone who, on a professional level, has said, you know what? This is the way to go. I've seen it in other cities before. I can tell you, the odds are in your favor if you go this way. I can't guarantee it's a win, but if you're going to go one way or the other, I would suggest you go this way. And working as a councilman and trying to become elected and helping other council members over the years, that activity is door-to-door. It was, it's pitching what you really want face-to-face with someone, and I am concerned, and my biggest concern, that without doing a fiscal emergency, we'll have enough time to educate. It takes a while to organize the team, to have that team articulate the message properly, to have it become absorbed, to try to face the headlines of a fiscal emergency and convince that we have been doing the right thing for a long time, and there are other aspects that caused this to happen, and then get into the reasons why we need the extra revenue because of coal and that whole subject. It takes a lot of time, and I don't see the efficiency factor in accumulating people to accept that if we had a fiscal. I'm just, if we got this thing started, it wouldn't really start till January, and people would make their minds up pretty soon when they see the headlines. And to overcome that, we're already middle, end of January when we hit the street and hit, hit our efforts, and here we are, and it's going to be made before you blink. And this is too important to do that. You can't put the pedal to the metal. It's not a race. It's a process. It's a dangerous one if we make the wrong decision, too. And the wrong decision could be the right decision, and I completely agree with the argument that the county could come in. But it's a gamble either way. So my gamble would be, I like to go with the odds. So my gamble would be, I like to go with the odds a little bit in my favor, and if I could talk and hit the street and have a team hit the street and let people know how and why, and how important this is. If we don't accomplish this, it's going to be the thriller from Manila. It's going to be very, very difficult to run this city. And it's a shame because we've accumulated so much. And one of the things, I'm sorry to take so much time, but one of the things that came out of this conversation was that I asked this person, I said, do you like this, and she's lived here a long time, I said, you like the city the way it is? She goes, yeah, I love it. Well, when we first formed the city, we didn't have a lot of development here, we didn't have mountain view, we didn't have the oaks, we didn't have a lot of the, so I can go through the neighborhoods, the population exploded in Calabasas. So what happens when population explodes? You need more services. Need more service, you have to hire more people. You have to have more space, you have to have, you have to have, you have to have, and it has a life of its own. That's partly the reason we're in this position, because we tried to give the best service we can, because that's Calabasas. And the other reason is the leverage that we never got from the county with the property tax. So it caught up with us, but we couldn't have helped it because of the development issue with, and the commons. People gravitated to come here, so we fulfilled what we wanted to do as a city, and now we have to fulfill what we have to do to continue as a city we are. So it's a tough decision. I really, I'm more prone to wait for the November election. So I've got a question for Pam. Pam, this is really for you. I think, Kenan, you, we've talked about this a little bit. Does this, for a fiscal emergency, do we have to be a 5-0 vote?
Yes, for a declaration of a fiscal emergency, it does require unanimous vote.
Okay.
If I may clarify, it requires five votes, so it can't be 4-0 with one abstention.
Correct.
Right.
Or absence.
Well, I gave that a lot of thought, a lot of thought.
So those are my comments. Thank you. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you. Councilmember Weintraub?
I really just have one question, and it's regarding timing. If we, kind of going back to what Ed was saying, if we go with June, will we have the time to do everything that we need to get done versus if we wait till November? That's really my only issue. The item's going to be on the ballot one way or another, it's just when we do it, and I just want to make sure that we're able to get it done right. And I worry about the holidays and all, like the lost month between, you know, Thanksgiving to Christmas and then New Year's, and I just want to make sure that we're really out there doing everything we need to. So that's my only question. If someone can tell me that we're going to be okay with June with that, I just, that's my only concern, is the timing.
Did you want to speak to that, city manager?
Mayor, do you want to express any concerns or comments or questions, and then I can follow up with a few notes?
All right, we'll, we'll hold you till the end. I'm going to share a few thoughts, and then we have a member of the public who wanted to weigh in as well. So just as a reminder, we are, we had this discussion at our last meeting, and we gave our city manager direction to move forward with, with the outreach, and we, we're counting on the experts. We're hiring professionals for surveys, we are hiring professionals for the outreach. These are entities that have done sales tax measures before, that are familiar with statistics and surveys and trends and messaging. And so to a lot of this, I know it's hard, but we have to leave it to the experts. So I do want to hear from our city manager on how he thinks that's coming along, but I know that we've already hit the ground running on that. I would agree with what's been said, is that we need to know that the timing of getting this done in June is viable, and at this point, I believe it is. I do appreciate all of the comments about outreach. After all, when we talked about a tax measure before, I spoke out against it because I didn't think we had enough outreach. But we had the outreach then, and we've continued on, and this has been noticed over and over and over again. It's unfortunate that we don't have 25,000 people in attendance tonight, but I do believe that there's 1,000 or 2,000 people that have heard of this, that are not participating tonight. Do I think we've reached everybody? No, I think we're going to try. So this, this course that we're on has already begun. One of the things too, is that when we look at making a decision of a fiscal emergency or not, I've asked our city manager to include what is the option, and I think Councilmember Shapiro asked for this too, is what if this doesn't pass, what do we do then? And in general discussions, I'll tell you this, if we cut 15% of our staff across the board, just chop 15% out the door, and we take away all of our little city functions, we get rid of the pumpkin festival, and we, we take out all of the dive-in movies and all of the other things that make us, you know, Calabasas, we still have to remove a full-time sheriff in order to balance the budget. That's just the reality of the numbers. It's either that or continue on this path of spending more money than we make and letting our city hall and other facilities fall into a state of disrepair. Those are our choices. So do I think we're in a fiscal emergency? I do. I'm sorry it's taken this long to see it, but I think that's where we're at. So tonight, what we're voting on is not to declare a fiscal emergency or not, it's not to pursue a sales tax measure or anything of that nature. What we're doing tonight is we're amending the budget to reflect the dollar figures it's going to cost to do this outreach that we approved at our last meeting, and then we'll head down this path. And I don't think any of us can guarantee the outcome. It could be June, it could be November, it could be a successful, it could be a failure. Personally, I'll just say one more thing, which is, I think that the point that Mayor Protam Bazzagian brought up is probably the biggest one for me. I've seen a lot of sales tax measures. Ever since I voted in California, I think there's been a sales tax measure on every ballot I've ever voted on. And it took a long time before I got into a, seated as a city councilperson and even began to understand how taxes work. What I do know is this, it caps after one more cent. I mean, yes, there's a few other workarounds, but in general, one cent more and it is capped. And if the county goes out for a sales tax measure in November, they could grab that last cent, and then the only means we have of balancing our budget is chopping 15% of our city staff, getting rid of all of our functions, and removing one of our sheriffs. And I don't like that option. So that's enough out of me. We do have a member of the public who's turned in a speaker card, so I'm going to call up Matthew. I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. Chevy? Why don't you come on up and state your name and city of residence? We'll give you three minutes.
Hey, guys. Matthew Chevy, Calabasas. I apologize, I don't recall seeing the annex in the handout, so if I remember correctly, you wanted to spend 70,000 on education slash propaganda, which I understand. My question is on the 55,000 in surveys. In my naivete, the only survey that counts is whenever the election day is. So I feel like that's a huge chunk of change. What, what is the city council expecting to get in exchange for $55,000 in surveys?
And because we are on an agendized item, we can actually address and answer you, which is really exciting, because when you're speaking on a non-agendized item, we can't.
That's why I put down the item number.
I'm glad you did. So the answer to that is, in our surveys that we did before, the surveys ask questions like which, would you vote for this and used a certain language, and then would you vote for this and used a different language? Really to test with the public of what, what they're in favor of, what they're not in favor of. It helps us craft the message, it helps us craft the language we use in the outreach, and it even helps us craft the language we use in the ballot measure itself.
Got it. All right, yeah, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we'll go to our city manager, Kenan Meek, for some more information.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I do have several items, and I'll try to go through these, not necessarily in the order that they came up, but just let me share a few things. So I'm going to share this with you, if you could pass this down, and I apologize for not having this available for, available for the public. This came as I had a good discussion earlier today with Councilmember Shapiro, and the question, I think Councilmember Albrecht also asked again tonight is, when is the best time to do this? Is it in November for an election, a general election, or is it during a primary? I went back historically and looked at elections going back to 2018, and you can see that how many local transaction and use taxes were on the ballot, and then how many passed. For those who are in the audience or in, on, watching online, this information comes from Californiacityfinance.com, and this is tracking sales tax transaction and use taxes across the state. What's hard to tell here is what's going on with these sales tax issues and what are the different components of this. So in general, you see a high rate of, high 80s for November elections, and then it varies for primaries. However, there's much smaller. So for example, in March of 2020, you had 30, whereas in June of 2022, you only had four sales tax initiatives. And so again, you have to be mindful that when it's 50%, it's very different than it's two than it is 35 or something like that. And so again, so in November of 2024, there were 91 transaction and use tax initiatives on the ballot across the state, and 81 passed, so an 89% turnaround on that. In March of 2024, there were 10, and then nine passed, so 90%. So again, but everything is different. You can go back to March of 2020, that is right at the beginning of COVID, cities had started already experiencing that, that pang of economic frustration, and so you can see then the numbers there at a 93%. So it, the, it's hard to say, I think, Councilmember Albrecht, when is it best? Because there's so much that changes in the variables of each election, whether it's economics, it's what's on the election, if it's a presidential, if it's a gubernatorial, all of those variables change things. As we've talked with the, the different experts, whether it's the outreach experts or FM3 and others who do surveys, they would prefer in November. It gives them a longer runway. With a survey, we, we are only likely to be able to do one survey from now until February, when the council would have to make a decision on a fiscal emergency. There's not enough time to do two. What would happen is we'd run into the same problem that we had last year, is where we tried to do two surveys within a short amount of time, and we didn't see the data change on that. The experts have also said just, they'd love to give a better date, but just, we don't know who's going to be running. That could change what happens in June compared to what happens in November, if there's bigger issues that come up, if there's different initiatives from the state, as Councilmember Mayor Protam Bazzagian mentioned, that might draw out a different crowd. So it's hard to pinpoint that down. The, but I do want to emphasize that it is required to have a 5-0 vote, as was mentioned just earlier. And so what we can't do, I think, is it's very, it's very, it would be counterintuitive for us to proceed as if we're going for a June, and then in February, when the council has to make that decision, it's not a 5-0 vote. Because what's happened at that point is we've expended a lot of time and resources to do the outreach to groups that we can't go back to a second time, and then that leaves eight months that we have between February and November that if we've already gone to an HOA, they're not going to invite us back. And so there's a lot of silence that happens in that eight-month period again. Now, again, there's, there's opportunities to move quickly, the, those who do community outreach are up to the task, but again, they would prefer a longer runway if they could. And again, we'd only have one survey, whereas if we did a November election, we'd have time to do another survey probably in May, just to gauge a difference between what's happening now and what's happening right before that decision was going to be made.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this item?
Well, I, I agree with what Kenan said in part, I mean, except I don't, I don't know what you get out of a second survey, because things could change between the second survey in November, there could be a market crash or something like that. So you're always going to get changes. The last time we did two surveys, we got almost no difference at all. And so I don't know that I would want to pay for two surveys for nothing. But I would say that the point you made is very salient. If, if Ed and David or whoever is saying they're not going to vote for a June, for a June primary, then we don't waste any more time on discussing the June primary, unless they're subject to being persuaded or changed. Yeah.
I like this. This is raising the odds. This is what I was talking about. But the issue is, I would go for it. I wanted to go for it originally. It makes all sense. I'm worried about the county, that was the big thing, the county coming in and swooping out, and it doesn't matter what we think, if they come in, it's a big bird just grabbing all the food. And then the idea of not having enough time, we can recover from the emergency decree, hopefully, if we had the time to do that. I'm not going to be an outcast. As I said, I was on the fence. With this in hand, this gives me more feeling that maybe we can pull it off. I'm not sure when they initiated their, were these fiscal emergencies on this list, they were just general?
We haven't been able to determine that. So again, I just pulled this list together this afternoon. Christie is looking at different cities that have filed emergency declarations, and there's not a lot that have in the recent elections.
See, one of the benefits of doing it early, that hasn't been mentioned, is that it will be quick. No one wants to go through the pain of having to hear about a tax measure for the next year. It's not even November yet, so it's going to go on for almost 13 months. I'm okay with it. I think I'll be okay with it. If this is evidence that, and it's got a really high percentage here too.
This is remarkably consistent, 85 to 90%.
Yeah, it's a very high percentage.
Yeah. Alicia?
This is for November?
No. Both.
So the highlighted?
But I'm looking at like June is 50%.
Yeah, but there were four elections.
Right, right, right.
I mean, I would toss that out because there's only four cases.
Right. But it...
Look at the other primaries, they're fine.
The March, right. As I said, the item's going to be on the ballot one way or another, and I support it. I just want to make sure we have the right time, so that's where I'm at. I'm willing to support moving forward if we think we have enough time, and if we think we need more time, I would support waiting till November. Same thing I said at our last meeting.
When we're talking about the experts and the surveys, is there something current that you can give us some results that they have come up? I know we had the surveys way back when, nine months ago, or a year ago, the last time we had a survey, and it was on the 53%, 56% range?
It's been almost a year.
Is that the last one we've had?
That's correct. Yeah, we haven't done any other surveying since then.
Okay, so we know it's on the, on the right side rather than the wrong side. I think we all would like to have it sooner. It's just my concern is, if we go forward with this, the message that we have to overcome has to craft considering the effects that people will have emotionally about our city declaring a fiscal emergency. I see that as a resident, as a stain, that, I've said this before, the same word, that we have to overcome. And that effort can, it can happen, just like I had with that, that Calabasasian last Friday. It was a definite no, until I reached out and explained it, it took a while, and then she'd now become an advocate for it. So we need a really heavy reach, and I really think we need to go door-to-door a little bit. Every one of us sitting on the council. It's that important. So with that effort, I would support it if we're going to go that way.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you. I, I looked at this and I thought, okay, November's, all of them are, at 2024, you can't go backwards, but it certainly would have had a very strong likelihood. but it certainly would have had a very strong likelihood of passing then. And the others are 90, 90. June, even though it's only four times, four items in 2022, is still 50%, not a good number. The only not favorable number was June on this sheet. So, to me, that brings a little concern to me. Because, again, we don't know, if anything, what would be on the ballot in June of next year, if we decided. The other thing, just to clarify, and I don't know who I asked for this. I assume our city attorney or our city clerk may know, or our city manager. But my understanding is once something is on the ballot, whether it's November or June, there is a period of time before where we are stopped as council members from advocating for that particular item. And the timeframe, if it's June, then would be what, March? I'm looking at our city clerk now.
No, I believe it is later than that. I can get back to you on that. I don't have the specific timeframe. But I will say that with the concern being timing issues, the good thing about this is you, in a way, have already incorporated outreach as part of your budget cycle and the budget process from the very beginning. And we have already started engaging with experts who have been doing this in so many of the other cities, many of which you see on the list there before you, which have had very, very good success rates. And we're working directly with those same experts. And just by way of example, the city of Culver City had declared their fiscal emergency in April, and they had their election in August, earlier this year. And so, we do believe that the timeframe, albeit is tight, I think the resources and those involved will be able to move this forward, to be able to get it done on time so that the appropriate outreach and education is done appropriately.
I don't see anything in the handouts or the report here showing any cities in particular. I know Culver City, I know of a couple, two others. And I don't see anything from any experts at this point. So, not saying you don't know, you certainly know more than we do at this point, but we've all been asking for that information, or I hear that request, that someone says the percentages, and it can't be done until the surveys are done. I understand that. But my comment was in relation to Ed's, which was very specifically, took an hour and something to talk to one person in our community. And as council members, if we are supporting something, there is a timeline where we are cut off from talking about this item. And it's not, yes, Ken?
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember, I think what you're referring to is, as we worked with the consultants last year, the last day for the council to make a decision on a fiscal emergency would be February 25th. Because that is our last meeting in February, and then the deadline is early March to get everything to the county. And so, that deadline, that to make that decision is when it really changes from advocacy to education. Meaning, we can talk about a sales tax and advocate for it, just as Councilmember Albrecht did. But after that February 25th date, it's education only. We can point people to our website, we can point people to our budgets. We just have to be very careful in not advocating for a sales tax.
Why not?
And I'm sorry, point of clarification. It's when we vote to put it on the ballot, we must stop advocating for it. We can only inform. It's not when we vote to declare a fiscal emergency.
Correct.
We could do that sooner. But once we vote to put it on the ballot 90 days before the election, that's when we have to stop advocating.
And that's why I said...
I would like the city attorney to weigh in, because we can go out and talk about it in the public like any other person with First Amendment rights.
As an individual, you do have certain First Amendment rights with respect to how you advocate for something. But it is different when you, as a council, speak as a whole. So, there is that distinction, and it is very nuanced. But to the extent we can get into that, I can provide an updated memo for you in terms of advocating versus educating whenever the time comes. I think the point of this agenda item today is moving forward with, like you said, Mayor, a budget amendment. To the extent that we may not declare a fiscal emergency moving forward, the money that's spent on the survey and the money that is spent on the outreach can still be towards a sales tax measure in November. So, it's not money that's spent and not useful. So, in that sense, a budget amendment would still be appropriate. It's just that tiny amount of money before you in determining whether or not the fiscal emergency part is going to be moving forward.
And I understand that. But I also listened very carefully to Kenan earlier, whose the wish is not to have this go forward. If the intention is in February or whatever the date is, that we are not possibly going to support a fiscal emergency or a ballot measure in June, and not have it drag on for a whole year of public engagement as opposed to a slower, longer process, if I heard you correctly. I don't want to misspeak, because I'm hearing two different concepts.
I think what staff is requesting is we don't want to be surprised in February. Meaning, if the action is to, and you're not making that decision, but in some ways, you're turning us into a path. And we don't want to be surprised in February. Meaning, if we exhaust our efforts before February and then cannot go back to the HOAs, neighborhood associations, Rotary Groups, Chambers of Commerce a second time, then we need to know that now. We need to be methodical in our process. And whether, and again, this is a council decision, if you tell us to go for June, we have to do our community outreach based on that timeline. If you tell us for November, then that's a different timeline. We just have to be aware of that very early on in the process.
And I still stand by my comments. I feel strongly, in spite of everything I'm hearing, that the additional time in November in a general election would be much better as far as education goes, as far as the public goes, as far as information goes. If I have experts, if we're just doing the budget now, and we're going to go ahead and get surveys back, and experts saying not 53%, but a substantial amount to go in June versus November, obviously, of course, that would be definitive. It would make my decision easy. But you're not wanting that on one hand, and I respect that. I'm hearing what you're saying as well. But I don't have anything in front of me. I don't have, none of us do, from experts. We're opining up here, frankly. That's all we're doing. These numbers are great. But every November has been very successful on the sheet you provided.
So, is it primary? Same percentages?
Except June, which is what we're looking at.
June is four cases.
I understand.
Two of them were unsuccessful, two of them were successful. I don't see how you can average four cases with 68 cases or 46 cases or the other things.
Or nine, or 10.
I mean, it's just, it's an outlier because there were so few cases.
That's one interpretation, and I don't disagree on one level. But what's the difference between nine and eight then? Or 10 and nine? You're talking about little, larger numbers more recently in the November general elections. Where there's a reason for that, I believe. And that's just my opinion, that the larger numbers of measures in the November election is because generally more people vote. And when more people vote, there is a larger likelihood of it passing. That's just my opinion. And I can be out, or I can learn why I'm incorrect on that.
Well, I mean, you know, then you could point to the lowest, really, of any statistical significance is November of 2022 with 74%. There were 46 cases there.
Right. And that was coming out of COVID. That was the same with 22.
We could go through this any number of ways. I don't think there's an appreciable, this is remarkably consistent, as any statistician will tell you. This is, this shows us that a properly run campaign, absent any exigent circumstances, will be approved.
And we don't know what the circumstances will be for either election at this point. But we do know that, we don't know how many of these, there's only three, I assume, on this list that are fiscal emergencies, or not, in the recent years, anyway, in the recent election. Fiscal emergency has a different tone to it, I believe.
Okay, I think we are delving off topic here. So, I'm going to rein this back in if I can. At this point, what I'm hearing is we're not 100% certain, or certain at all, of a fiscal emergency in a June election. And we are looking for more information before we can make that decision. So, confirming our last decision at our last city council meeting, I'm asking staff to move full speed ahead with the survey so we can get some data in front of us that we can make a decision with. And hopefully, with that, we can figure out what our timeline will be. In regards to the budget item that's before us, do we have enough to approve the budget?
Yes.
I think we do.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the budget, to move forward, amending the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget to fund a potential sales tax measure on the June 2026 primary election for not to exceed amount.
Second.
Okay, taking them out of order, we're voting on item number nine?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Any estimate as to when that survey might come back to us? And that information, Ken?
So, the goal right now is to have the survey out on the streets at the end of the first week of November. It's usually a two-week turnaround to do the survey and then to collect the data. I don't think it would be ready by our December 3 meeting, which would mean it wouldn't be able to come back until our first meeting in January.
Would we get the information back before then? Or does it have to come?
Do we do a special?
We could do a special.
I think, I don't want to, like, lose the time.
I would second on that. There was a motion to that, but definitely, as soon as we could find out, have a special. Every day counts. The stopwatch is going right now. Every single day, it's closer to the election if we're going to do this in June.
Okay. What I'd suggest is we'll go ahead and agendize a short discussion item on this for our next meeting as well then, so that we can figure out a special meeting if needed. Certainly, the survey results can be sent to all of us once they're available. And then with that information, I think our city staff could figure out whether we need to pursue the outreach immediately or if we want to slow roll the outreach for a later election. Okay?
Okay, are we voting?
So, we're voting on approving item number nine, the budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That was moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Albrecht. Motion carries five zero. We'll go back to the rest of the items on the consent calendar then. Can I get a motion for the rest of the items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. We are voting on the remainder of the consent items. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. That was for items five, six, seven, and eight. So, we're now into a public hearing. This is the introduction of ordinance number 2025-417, amending section 20 of chapter 10 dot 20 of title 10, Mobile Billboards and Resolution Adopting Amended Fee Schedule. The Community Development Director, Michael Klein, will be presenting the report tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This item is brought to you tonight by our Code Enforcement Division. After responding to several complaints about vehicles parked on the street with signs attached to those vehicles, our Code Enforcement Department realized that there are gaps within the city's ordinance on how to regulate these things. And because of those gaps, code enforcement was unable to actually cite or impound these vehicles. And because of that issue, the Code Enforcement Division reached out to our city attorney's office to talk about what needs to be modified within the city's current ordinances to properly regulate these. And essentially, their goal was to work with the city attorney's office to develop or modify the ordinance in order to regulate signs in the right of way to the maximum extent possible under state and federal law. So, with that, I'll turn this over to our code enforcement manager, Ray Soria, and he'll provide more information via PowerPoint.
Thank you for that introduction, Michael, and good evening, council. What we have in front of you, as Michael pointed out, is a proposed ordinance to amend the current definition of mobile billboard advertising displays, and also give us the ability to cite vehicles that contain signs on them. And under the current ordinance, our current regulations, and this is something that I kind of want to draw attention to, is our current law only applies to non-motorized vehicles. So, for, and I'll get to other examples of what the law does not apply to. But currently, what the law applies to is, if you look at the photos that we provided, these are the perfect examples of a sign that's on a trailer on wheels that is attached to a vehicle. And that is our current ordinance. And our current definition indicates that it's an advertising display that is attached to a wheeled, mobile, non-motorized vehicle. And that's the takeaway here. It's a wheeled, mobile, non-motorized vehicle. And what we tried to do with this ordinance is basically strike a balance between First Amendment rights and the ability to advertise. And one of the distinctions here is Assembly Bill 436. And this is the main component. Actually, without Assembly Bill 436, this proposal wouldn't have been possible. And the main thing that Assembly Bill 436 accomplishes is it gives us the ability to address signs on vehicles, signs on motorized vehicles, and treat them the same as a mobile vehicle. And as I indicated, it has to be content neutral. It can't necessarily address the message on the sign. It's really intended to address a potential safety hazard. This ordinance is also applicable only to the street. And also, what we're trying to accomplish here is amend our fine schedule. Because currently, as it stands now, we don't have the ability to cite vehicles. And in this next slide, we have, these are actually real-world examples that we found on Calabasas Road. And under our current ordinance, this wouldn't be enforceable in any way. We wouldn't be able to cite these vehicles. We wouldn't be able to impound them. But our, what we're trying to accomplish here is implement this proposed amendment that would effectively address these issues. And again, what we're trying to accomplish here is to amend our current LVPA fine schedule. What we want to accomplish is a tiered system, making it, the first violation would be for $100, second violation, $2, and the third would be $500. So, our recommendation would be to conduct the first reading and introduce ordinance number 2025-417, amending section 20 of chapter 1020 of title 10 of the Calabasas Municipal Code to amend the definition of mobile billboard advertising displays and adopt resolution 2025-1985, rescinding resolution number 2025-1961, along with all penalty schedules attached there, too, and adopting an updated and amended schedule of parking penalties, section to establish a tiered fine structure. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any council questions?
I just had some comments. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. This is actually why I love our city and the fact that we can respond so quickly and efficiently to issues when they arise. So, I really appreciate this. I'm very much in support of this. It's become, sorry, it was a, definitely becoming a big issue, especially on Calabasas Road. So, I'm very happy to see this in front of us.
Thank you to the staff. I have no questions. Okay?
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you also to the staff. This is well done, great report. And I'll have to find a handyman on my own from now on. But I fully support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor. Great report, long time coming, and glad to know that we won't have this to worry about, but I would like to comment on the penalty. I think a penalty, first offense of $100, second offense of $200, is really not a lot of money. But they, the cost of advertising alone should, if it was done by a company, is five times that, or more. So, I'd like to see the penalties raised, probably to 250 the first time, then maybe 750 the second time, something that'll sting. So, sometimes when you get a first offense for 100 and the next one's 200, it's not really going to stop you if the product is selling and is doing well, and most likely, they're not going to be cited so quickly. So, that would be my recommendation. I'd leave it to staff a little bit about the dollar amount. I'm not an expert on that, but I would go like 250, 750, and then 1,000, or something like that.
Thank you for that input. The one thing that I do want to point out is, every day that that sign is out there, it is subject to a fine. So, if it's there the first day, $100, second day, it's 200, and so on and so forth.
Okay, I didn't know that, so I'm going to...
So, it adds up.
Right, so, probably because of cameras, we would know if there's a camera on Calabasas Road, or where it was cited, how long it's been out there. Have to go through the footage, but if they're out there a week, so I'm not sure if I'd want to have it, you know, that high, that quickly, but why don't you bring us back some Or maybe we can talk about it tonight, about raising it, you know, at that level, maybe just add, you know, 200, 300, 700, or something like that. I'm not sure. How often have these vehicles that did get cited been on the street that way?
We haven't been able to cite them, till now. That's the whole reason this is before us, so...
And after the third day, it's $500 a day.
And our residents will, will know right away if these vehicles are there.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. So, maybe we can look at, relook at this for the penalty side, if it's not appropriate to stop that.
So, I'd need a second council member to amend this motion, because we're, if you're proposing an amendment?
I think the goal, if they're not moving, it's going to add up really quick.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, I didn't know that. So, that satisfies what I wanted, because of the penalty. But if this doesn't work, as stated, then we can revisit it, and then we'll do that.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll come back to your motion momentarily. This is a public hearing, so now I'm going to, I have no comments or questions myself, other than my thanks for bringing this to us. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I now close the public hearing. Now can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five zero. The motion approved the introduction of the ordinance. I will read the title into the record and waive the full reading of the text. We approved ordinance number 2025-417, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Calabasas, California, amending section 20 of chapter 10 dot 20 of title 10 of the Calabasas Municipal Code to amend the definition of mobile billboard advertising display. And this will be back before us again at our next meeting. Moving on to continued business, we have none, and for new business, we have the introduction of ordinance number 2025-418, amending chapters 3 dot 40, and ordinance number 2025-419, amending chapters 3 dot 42 of the Calabasas Municipal Code relating to the city's purchasing system. The Public Works Director, Curtis Castle, will present the report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation, I just have a few opening remarks, and then I'm available for questions, along with Erica Green, Community Services Director, who also played a big part in this effort. So, tonight before you, our proposed updates to the city's purchasing ordinance, specifically amendments to chapters 3.40 and 3.42 of the Calabasas Municipal Code. These sections establish the authority threshold and procedures for how the city procures supplies, services, and public works contracts and projects. These updates were triggered by an upcoming transition to an online procurement platform. So, staff started reviewing the municipal code to make sure that we could support e-procurement. Little details like publicly opening bids electronically, as opposed to reading hard copy bids in council chambers. We want to make sure that our municipal code expressly allowed us to make this transition. And in doing that, that triggered us to look at the rest of the purchasing code. And we realized that the purchasing code had not been updated for over 15 years, and there were other updates that were required to thresholds, and just some minor procedural changes that would result in efficiencies for city staff. We feel that the changes are going to align the Calabasas's purchasing system with today's environment. We've all experienced an increase in costs, and that, we feel that directly, especially in public works and community services, where we do the majority of the procurement for the city. We run into these different issues quite a bit. So, we recommend the council conduct the first reading and introduce ordinance numbers 2025-418 and 2025-419, and again, we're available for questions.
Okay. Councilmember questions? We'll do questions first, we'll have the public hearing, and then we'll come back to comments. None?
Just a quick one, and this is, probably doesn't relate to these two sections, but I know we've talked previously about it, and in what was a committee then. Are there any green procurement considerations going forward, or that were discussed?
Not as part of these changes. There is green procurement being discussed. It's been at the Environmental Commission, but it hasn't come to council yet.
Thank you very much. This is great.
No questions?
No questions? I have a, you know what, I'm going to hold mine till comments, I think. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing then. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Now's your opportunity. Oh, almost had Mason there, moving in his chair. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. So, I have a question, kind of more of a comment. One of the concerns that I've had over the years is when we have a no-bid contract for, let's say, $10,000, and then we give it $100,000 change order. Is there anything in here that allows us, that would prohibit that at this point? And if not, why have we not considered putting that in?
There is nothing that expressly prohibits that. Those amendments do come to council. So, if we start, the way the revisions work right now is that, that would bump up to $25,000. If we need to amend beyond that, and we start hitting those thresholds, we'll have to come back to council, as we do now, and explain why we're taking a no-bid contract and amending it. It's a process that, and I'll let Erica jump in if she wants to, that we try to avoid. That's not something we want to do. The intent with those smaller contracts is really to keep them small, and they're generally for maintenance items. We've just experienced some issues with the city's infrastructure that have required urgent attention, and, you know, that's why you, we've brought some of those amendments to you. But there is nothing that expressly prohibits that. That, again, would come to council's discretion to deny the amendment, because, you know, if we were in that situation where we're amending a no-bid contract.
Okay. And then, lastly, I would say that we're looking at numbers here that are probably an 80% increase over what they were before. How long has it been since we've updated this fee schedule?
15 years. And I did do a little comparison, and I got more confused when I looked at other cities' procurement guidelines. They're all over the place. I will say, we are generally, though, on the low side right now with our thresholds, and this really bumps us into the middle of the pack. Again, you can't really do an apples-to-apples comparison, because different cities put a lot of different nuances in their procurement codes. Some have hardly any, you know, written procedures for this, but it looks like a big increase. But again, it's 15 years old, and we're just kind of hitting the middle of what other Southern California cities have as their thresholds, from the research I did.
And I appreciate that, but would you say, when you looked at other cities, could we limit that to just cities of our size? Because, for example, the city of Los Angeles, when they do a paving contract, it's exponentially larger than ours. So, with cities our size, where do we fall now, and where would we fall after this, if this was passed?
Yeah, I did look at the cities around us, so Southern Ventura County and the West San Fernando Valley. We're still going to be about in the middle of the range. I didn't find much for Agora Hills. We're going to be about where Malibu is, and in line with Thousand Oaks and other communities like that.
Any other council comments? Okay, can I get a motion?
So moved.
That was moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Albrecht. I'm tripping over my tongue right now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. The motion approved the introduction of two ordinances. I will read the titles into the record and waive the full reading of the text. Ordinance number 2025-418, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Calabasas, California, amending chapter 3 dot 40 of the Calabasas Municipal Code, revising the regulations for purchasing systems. And ordinance number 2025-419, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Calabasas, California, amending chapter 3 dot 42 of the Calabasas Municipal Code, revising the regulations for awarding public projects. Okay, we're on to verbal reports. Do my fellow council members have anything to report?
I do. At our Cog meeting, Assemblymember Irwin was in attendance, and we were able to have some great time sharing our frustrations with Edison, and Edison was also on the call, and Jackie really was very strong in her frustration with Edison and the impacts to our city, and she's going to be having a meeting with them, a meeting with them in her office. But we really were able to have some good FaceTime with her about this issue and the impact to our community. Anything else?
Yeah, if I could add to that, just in regards to Edison, Scott has been working with our representative at Edison, and it looks like we're able to now move forward with a December 4 meeting, to have a town hall with Edison. Unfortunately, Mayor Portem, I know you're not available that day, but we're concerned that otherwise it would stretch into January or further.
It's okay. The question you guys asked me was, was I around that time? And I'm not, but that's okay. Go ahead. You can, I'll miss it.
Okay. Mayor Portem?
The only thing I have to report is that the League of California Cities Annual Convention was a couple weeks ago, and it was held in Long Beach. I attended it on behalf of the city. There was, there were no resolutions, so the business meeting itself was canceled, and several of you came down for a day, and it was nice to see the staff there as well. It's a great convention.
Thank you. Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you. Yes, it was a great convention, and congratulations, James. You were honored in front of everyone. I've attended a number of SCAG meetings, most recently, the Legislative Committee meeting, where we had Congressman Calvert from the Inland Empire talking about the shutdown in Washington DC, appropriation bills, and how SB 2651 will also potentially affect road and housing, all the way down to the local level. So, there'll be more information provided to us if we want to weigh in on those items when they come forward locally, more local things. Also, Valley Economic Alliance educated, we already attended that. We have a board meeting tomorrow morning, and Alicia and I met with the school district to go over certain things, including, two members of the school board, including the transportation and the traffic situation around the school and around the city. And that's it. Thank you.
Just a couple, I really, I attended the League in Long Beach as well. The seminars were great. One in particular, I attended the Tax Initiative meeting that lasted well over an hour, and it was well-attended. I think we must have had at least 200, maybe more. There was hardly a seat available. And it was very worthwhile, went down for the day. Tomorrow, we have the Valley Economics meeting in the morning. I've got the Finance Committee for CQ Power Alliance coming up, and tomorrow, Alicia and I are going to be working on LA 28. So, we're making some nice progress, thanks to community services, and it's going to be very exciting, so the bell's going to be ringing pretty soon for us. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, and I have nothing else to report. Thank you for that. City Manager, do you have anything to share?
I don't, Mayor. The big announcement was the town hall meeting with Edison on December 4, and we'll be making sure that we publicize that widely for our community to attend.
Okay, then, we are now going to adjourn back into closed session. Hold on.
Offer an idea for an agenda item, future agenda item?
Sure.
And that is concerning billboards. And I'd like to discuss raising the billboard criteria, so there could be a little bit more signage on the freeway, particularly for the auto zone. I think we're losing out on a lot of revenue, and I think the opportunity to help that auto group would vastly be improved. I'll just use one little example, because this was just conversation right now. I know this council had discussed it, and so did planning, and that's the Mercedes window, where that was not allowed to have a Mercedes name on it. And I think that needs to be reviewed, because the simple name of having it on that side, we've all passed it almost every single day, I think can help the car business and our sales tax as well. So, it's a win-win for the car dealerships and us, and also even considering digital signage. I know it's a bad word, but when it comes to every car dealership in Los Angeles, they have some form of digital signage, and we've got to support our auto group. And by supporting them, it's supporting us. So, just a conversation, and see if we can find some, a resolution to help drive a little bit more business, and help them as well as helping us.
So, thank you for that. Would you suggest maybe this begins at the Planning Commission, as it would be amending our sign ordinance?
That's a good question. I'd like it to come to council, and then council can direct the Planning Commission, after we have the chance to discuss it a little bit.
I'll second that for, I'll second.
We'll provide an additional memo with respect to what can be provided on onsite billboards next to a landscape freeway versus what's not, because California does have strict regulations with respect to freeway signage.
Thank you.
Okay. City Manager, would you take a note for future agenda item? Thank you. And with that, unless there's anything else, we are now adjourned back into closed session, and after that, we will return for our next regular meeting of the city council, which will be held on November 12, 2025.